Good evening. The March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, the prayer and pledge will be led by the student leaders of the Laterno Student Ministries at Laterno University. The organization exists to promote and sponsor community ministries, campus ministries, and missions. This spring break, more than one hundred and thirty-one students participated in mission trips to places as far as Mexico and as close as Longview. Krista Anderson is a civil engineering major with an environmental concentration graduating in two thousand and twenty-three. Megan Fault is an accounting major graduating in two thousand and twenty-four, and John Michael Smith is a civil engineer major graduating this year. You all please rise and welcome these students to our chambers.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for your love and your mercy. Thank you for your power and might over all things. We submit our decisions and thoughts and words in this meeting to you. Please guide these leaders to surrender their jobs and lives to you that they may best serve this city as you see with your eternal wisdom. Bless those here who choose to bear the burden of leadership for our sake. Bless them with your humility and selfless love. We thank you for this opportunity to better this city for your sake. May this time be our worship to you. In Jesus's mighty name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate your attendance. And did y'all catch what I said a minute ago? Engineering, accounting, engineering. That means smart, smart, smart. Scary, scary, scary. Accounting was, that'll be another day, another story. Hardest class I ever took in my whole life. I took a lot of classes. Only class I ever dropped in my whole academic career. After three days, I dropped my accounting one class. Because I wasn't afraid I wasn't gonna make an A, I feared I wouldn't pass the class in three days. Dropped it, done. Accounting people way up on my list. Thank y'all for being here. That was why I went to that. I have no idea, but oh well, we did it anyway. Okay. We're now to presentations. Tonight, I have a few presentations to do. We're gonna start with Autism Awareness Family Fun Day. To receive this will be Ms. Alice Coleman and Anitra Anderson. Hold one second, let me read this, and I'll meet you all up front, okay? It's easier for me to read from here than up front. Autism Awareness Family Fun Day, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas Positive People with Positive Attitudes has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize April ninth, two thousand and twenty-two as Autism Awareness Family Fun Day in the city of Longview. And whereas Positive People with Positive Attitudes is an organization with the focuses on building healthy relationships within the community, our purpose is to bring unity, direction, and educate people to make a difference. And whereas this is a time to recognize families and friends who suffer from this disorder, and the community is encouraged to join in the events on April ninth, helping ensure that everyone understands their right to live in conditions of opportunity, peace, dignity, and mutual respect. So now therefore, I add to my authority vest to me as mayor of the city of Longview, do proclaim the day of April ninth, two thousand and twenty-two as Autism Awareness Family Fun Day in the city of Longview. Please come forward. Ms. Alice, Ms. Anitra, I appreciate y'all so much for just bringing this to the forefront of the public. Autism exists, we know that. What we don't know is what those go through who have it and those families that are with them. And you all helped that by bringing this awareness to the community, and I appreciate that so much. Because without awareness, we can never be fully understanding of the condition. So thank you all so much for your efforts. Keep it up, y'all are awesome. I appreciate you so much. Thank y'all, y'all are the best. Finally, I'm taller than somebody. Okay, I'm just gonna stand here, this is easier now. Next will be our Longview Gregton Rotary PRC A Rodeo Day. Whereas Longview Gregton Rodeo Club has recognized that the mayor by proclamation recognized April eighth, two thousand and twenty-two as Longview PRC A Rodeo Day in the city of Longview. Whereas the Longview Gregton Rotary Club continues or contributes to the quality of life in the city of Longview and Greg County by providing community events that also serve as fundraisers and through which a multitude of local nonprofit organizations have benefited. So now therefore, I add to my authority vest to me as mayor of the city of Longview, proclaim April eighth, two thousand and twenty-two as Longview Gregton Rodeo PRC A Rodeo Day in Longview. Our rodeo club, come on up. It's always great to have the rodeo, the rodeo, the Rotary Club here with us. I like this, standing right here. Okay, so I'm back here, it's good. So, you know, the rodeo is such a fun event every year. I know I really look forward to it. I know the community looks forward to it, and, but it doesn't go on without a lot of work. And that work comes from you guys and ladies, and I appreciate y'all's efforts because it's, it's an event that helps Longview be recognized. People recognizing, understand that people come from all across the country to participate in it and to watch it. So keep up the good work. We're gonna pray for great weather this year. It always seems to rain at least one of the days, and it's usually Friday night, I don't understand why, but we're gonna pray for great weather and just keep up the continued work. Y'all are awesome. It's, it's a great testament to see so many people in this group that are so involved in our community to spend their time helping Longview through the Rotary Club. So keep up the good work, gang. Appreciate every one of y'all. Y'all are awesome. Good job. Whoa, 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 get up there now, hold that farce. There you go, get up there.
Sorry, we're gonna let them, go ahead and take a step forward there, and then y'all feel it.
Going down, okay. Everybody.
Not me.
You're good, you're good. Holly, perfect. Yes, thank you. Got a window, got a window. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all so much. Appreciate every one of y'all. Keep up the great work. Thanks, guys. Good to see y'all. Thank y'all. Tonight, in employee recognition, we're recognizing the Public Safety Communications. Longview Public Safety Communications Division serves as the nine-one-one answering post, answering point, and dispatch center for the city of Longview Police, Fire, and EMS services twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. In two thousand and twenty-one, Longview PSC processed over two hundred and thirty-seven thousand phone calls, averaged nearly six hundred and fifty calls per day. Despite dealing with a staffing crisis exacerbated by the COVID-nineteen pandemic, division personnel were able to answer the ninety-one percent of nine-one-one calls within ten seconds and saw an average dispatch time of fourteen seconds on priority one calls like injury accidents, medical calls, or for crimes in progress. Over the last year, the Public Safety Communications Division has provided lifesaving CPR instructions, assisted delivery of babies, provided reassurance and comfort to residents dealing with acts of violence and performing countless other acts of quiet heroism that go largely unnoticed. In attendance tonight, we have Public Safety Communications Manager Matt Ainsworth, Telecommunications Operator Daniel Garza, Senior Telecommunications Operator Anna Carter, Senior Telecommunications Operators Caleb Nichols, and Lead Telecommunications Operator Deborah Raven. Please come forward. Walk up here proud, because I am so proud of this group, oh my gosh. Did y'all get some of those statistics I just read? I know I talk fast sometimes, but let me, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand phone calls, six hundred and fifty calls per day, ninety-one percent answered within ten seconds. Would any of y'all looking for a job, I have openings in my office. If you ever want one, you come straight to me. But this is totally mind-boggling that you can perform such a magnitude of tasks in such a short period of time and do it so effectively. I know I've called nine-one-one a couple of times, and I'm sure I've talked to y'all, and y'all are just amazing. You're calming, you're caring, you take care of the person on the other end of the phone call, and you make them feel they're reassured and they know they're gonna have help on the way. And that's all we could ask of anybody. Please, 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 keep up the good work. Y'all are just so special to our community and to nine-one-one and to the police, fire, EMS. It just, there's no way we can replace you all. So we're not looking to replace any of y'all. Y'all are awesome. So thank you so much. Appreciate you more than you know. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
This one, we've been doing it for thirty-four years.
Thirty-four years. Okay, that deserves another round of applause. Counting on y'all to be here thirty-four years too, okay? Great job, ladies and gentlemen. Thank y'all so much. I do have one speaker card. Mr. Larry James Smith.
Pretty city councilor, I wanna take my mask off so my words can be articulated correctly since I don't have any teeth. Resided twenty-three oh-six Nixon Drive, Longview, Texas. Today, I'm going to reiterate Rollins Elementary School, which was press, which was in the past Fox fifty-one TV station. The location is prime for the program that I'd like to initiate, plus it's a place where I went to elementary school. I'd like to revive it. I'm not gonna pay six hundred K for it, but I'm negotiating with the owner. If we can work a deal, we can make awesome things happening, happening, such as ten charging stations, because I know it's coming. You know how I know it's coming? They're building a lot of electrical cars right now, trucks also, SUVs. That's one profitable, profitable entity on that building's property. The next one is, I just found out today, because I am a disabled veteran and with a business, I'm a business owner, I'm applying through my sole proprietorship and my DUNES number to get funded to buy the place. Hopefully, I can get a negotiation with the owner to lower that price. It will also bring in jobs, because I need to bring in jobs for children, men thirteen to thirty-five, which will be educated there. The programs they go through and keep certified on will be paid for, if not by means that I can gather, it will be paid for by me. Also, by educating them there and bringing jobs in through government contracts, they can do the government contract job in the building. That means that not only they can get employment, they can also get employment in Longview. As I reach out to different businesses to say, hey, look, do you need an employee? Do you have training? Let me train them in my building, educate them, strengthen their weaknesses, bringing them up with the certification to take on the job in your place from day one. Government contracts are important, and they're gonna be very important because we need somebody to build cables, harnesses. That's just the beginning and tip of the iceberg. I wanna bring jobs to Longview, but at the same time, I wanna educate young men, make them responsible individuals. Thirteen to thirty-five, that's critical. I know we got it. I wanna change the culture in South Longview. I don't want it to be deemed as a criminal area. That hurts me, because it hurts everybody there to try to get a loan in Longview, and they find out you do live south of Birdsong or south of Cotton, you ain't no getting no job, because your credit score is below six hundred or below five hundred. I need to get that improved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're now to public safety update. Chief Moon.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. McPhee. Community programs, about March of two thousand and twenty, remember a little thing called COVID, we shut down just basically all the stuff we were doing as far as our outreach goes, but for April two thousand and twenty-two, we're going to start back up again. So we will have our ride-along program. I already have somebody signed up for, I think, Friday, April eighth, so if anyone wants to beat them, they've got seven days to be the first one. Neighborhood watch meetings, we don't have any scheduled just yet, but I've told our par officers, our police area representatives, to go ahead and start talking to their crime watch captains, and anybody that feels comfortable having one, we'll go ahead and start having those again. And then also, we're in the process right now of scheduling our women's safety. We're shooting for either late May, early June for that. Citizens Police Academy will be back this fall, and our Team Police Academy, we normally do that in January through March. We're gonna try to bring that back this summer and actually have that as a summer program this year. And then also, our national kickoff later this summer. And to find these events, you can go to longviewtexas.gov/polic, and you will see our calendar on there, and we are going to be very diligent about getting all of this on our calendar so that it's very accessible for everybody to find and see what's happening in their area. Also, Project Three Sixty-five, we're still continuing with that in the Birdie Park area. And with that, we will actually have a Love Longview Day on April second, so next Saturday, and that'll start at eight AM, where we will get litter and any other junk or debris cleaned up in that area and just make it look a little bit nicer for everybody. Also, we haven't talked about our police area, or excuse me, our police outreach and services team, our post team, in a little while, but this is just one example of all the stuff that they do on a regular basis that we don't always see. This is a campsite, there on the left, you can see what it looked like when the officers first found it, and over here on the right side is what it looks like right now, and it's still in the process of being cleaned up even better than that. They had an option, and of course, as you know, they try to use other outreach besides just traditional policing, law enforcement, and instead of issuing a citation to this person, they went with the, let's get it cleaned up instead, and he has worked diligently to do that. And also, we're working on some rehabilitation programs for him as well to help get out of that situation. Very proud of that unit. Also, Parks had their inaugural kite festival on the fourteenth, last Wednesday, and that was very successful and very successful for us. You can see on the left side, we were, anywhere we can throw up a recruiting poster, we're going to, so we had that on the left side there. And we also had our child ID program going on as well, and we actually set a record for ourselves. We actually had sixty-two children that we got signed up through that program, so that's, we were very busy, fingers were sore after the, after that, so a lot of typing going on. And I also wanna give you updates, still looking for officers, but we've got three, starting the Tyler Junior College Academy Monday. And also, like Deborah Raven, I'll say that she started when she was fifteen, so she's just that young, even though she's been here thirty-four years. Sergeant Jackie Howes, he's celebrating thirty-six years with us today, so he actually had a short law enforcement career before that, but been with us for thirty-six years, so very proud of him as well. And with that, if y'all have any questions?
Any question, Chief Moon?
Just to come in, Chief, just wanted to say, as far as the post unit?
Yes, ma'am.
I've heard nothing but positive things about the job that they're doing, so I also would like to come in and say the great work that they're doing.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you all. Anything else? Thank you. Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. McPhee. I'd like to thank you on a few things that have happened in the fire department since our last meeting. I'm sure as you've seen in the news, it's very highly publicized, the state of Texas is pretty much on fire everywhere west of here, and we had, the Longview Fire Department has people downrange, helping as a state asset, get control of those fires and do as much structure and town protection as they can. I'm not sure if you've seen anything about the town of Carbon, but they actually lost a fair portion of their town because of these fast-moving wildfires. So those employees that we have out there right now, Captain Dusty Burks, Lieutenant Kelsey Trotty, Lieutenant Clay Williamson, firefighter paramedic Chris McGuinness, and firefighter, fire driver engineer Kyle Sands, and we actually deployed a sixth person out today as we continue to throw resources to try and get these fires under control. And just to give you an idea of the size of some of these wildfires that they're fighting out here, and this video's gonna run and show you, they're gonna do an airdrop here in just a minute, but our guys have been on the Kidd Fire in Eastland County, which is forty-two thousand-plus acres, and the Big L Fire in E-Rath County, which is ten-thousand-plus acres. So you can imagine the amount of resources that have come from all over the state of Texas to try and help get control of these fires, which I'm a big proponent of, because the faster they get control of them out there, the less of a threat that we have to worry about them making it here, as we did in two thousand and eleven, if you remember that event. It took about a year and a half for those fires on the far west side of the state, but eventually, guess what? They were in our front yard pretty quick, I mean, not pretty quick, but, but pretty evident over that time because of the drought conditions. So we're happy to be a part of this, and again, we're just doing our part to help out our state, and glad that we have resources that are trained and qualified to go out and participate. Safety City Day, so back on St. Patrick's Day, Safety City held kind of an opening, a reopening, and it was, it was a lot of fun. Fire police were there, they had a huge turnout. I think it was even better than they were expecting, so it was certainly great to see Safety City back up and running. The credit for that should go to the Parks Department, who has poured a ton of work into kinda getting things back on track over there and doing a lot of maintenance work, and we certainly appreciate that. It's a great opportunity for us to interact with small children, you know, we have the ability to teach them some fire safety tips and things like that while the police talk to them about road and street safety. So it's just, it's a great opportunity, and we're so fortunate that we have this here in our city, because it's unlike anything else. You have to go to the Metroplex to find anything even close to what we have here with Safety City. I just, I love this picture when I saw it, this little guy, he wasn't having it. I don't know if somebody cut him off in traffic, or he ran out of gas and he's upset about fuel prices, but he, that was just too good of a picture to not put in there. I'm sure he was having fun, that picture just didn't capture that. We were fortunate earlier this week to have hosted a company officer symposium. This is a course that is put on by the Texas Fire Chiefs Association. This course travels around the state, and it offers mid-level management-type training for fire company officers. We were happy to have seven of our company officers attend that training, along with the representatives from the other five or six departments that you see there. These guys kinda, they kinda get together and do a mind meld and see if, you know, the issues and the problems that you're having in this city or this department, are they the same that you're having over here? And then, what are the right and the wrong ways about doing things? And it's just a really good experience for these guys to go through, not to mention the networking ability that this provides for them to actually see how things happen in other departments besides ours. So we were very happy to host that. It was instructed by Daniel De Year. Daniel is a longtime deputy chief in the Dallas Fire Department, he's currently their chief of training. Daniel is, he's kinda known across the state for being an excellent instructor for this program, and we were certainly glad to be a part of that as well. We would like to wish a fond farewell to Captain Chris Gray. Captain Gray has served just over twenty years with the Longview Fire Department, and he is going to be retiring here pretty soon. His actual last shift of working will be tomorrow, and then he's gonna burn some accrued time to get him, I think, to his April tenth retirement date. And he's, I know he's got some other career opportunities lined up, and we wish him well in that, and we thank him for his dedicated service to our city. He's been an excellent employee, and we hate to see him go, but it's kinda bittersweet. We're excited that he's got some other opportunities out there in front of him, and I know he's excited about that. Severe weather, man, that was, that was all over us this week, right? And so it's time to start throwing this slide back in there to remind our citizens that we have an alerting system, the Smart nine-one-one app or alerting system, where you can receive timely information about these types of weather events as they're developing and getting worse. And it's customizable. You can choose to receive this information either through a phone call, through an email, through a text, or all three. So you can pretty much build it however you want it, however suits your needs, and you can pick which information you wanna receive. I mean, I get information from not just Greg County, but Rust County as well. Just, if it's happening in Rust County, pretty good chance it might happen in Greg County, so I have that much more advanced notice that something's coming. So you can go in there and pick whose jurisdiction you wanna get their information for. And this travels with you. If you're out of town and the warning comes in and you're concerned about, hey, what's happening at my house, well, you're gonna get that call even if you're in another state, so that you can have somebody maybe go check on your place. So again, longviewtexas.gov alerts is the place to go to check that out, and it's a free service, so we need more people to try and take advantage of that. Again, this is kinda the two punch. Let me talk about the one punch of how we do warning here in the city of Longview. Everybody knows very well that we have a very widespread early warning system with our siren technology, the early warning sirens. These are the sirens that we try to test at noon, once a month, first Wednesday of every month, to make sure everything's up and operational. We always get questions about, I heard the siren, I didn't hear the siren, you set the sirens off, or you didn't set the sirens off, and it's, I wanna take just a minute of you, indulge me to explain the rationale about how that works and why. We made the decision many, many years ago, when the city decided to continue investing in this level of technology, and I wanna compare it to, this is analog technology, okay? If you have to hear a siren outside, that's, that's old school, right? That's Cold War-era technology. But the reason it's important to have is what happens when the new digital technology through the phone call doesn't happen? What happens if the tornado takes out the cell phone towers? What happens when all of that infrastructure is damaged? The, the hope is that the siren system is your failsafe, it's your backup. So we operate these two systems in tandem with one another. You may hear the sirens going off before your phone rings. Your phone may ring, and then the sirens may go off. It just depends on how long it takes those processes to happen. And you're recognizing the things that happen in public safety communications, this is one of the big responsibilities that they have in, in terms of like Monday nights, yeah, the weather the other night, I've already forgot what night the weather happened, but when those storms...
It was, it was there, don't worry, chief. I remember.
When those storms, when those storms are happening, and fortunately with this one, we had, we had the opportunity to pay attention to this one two, three hours before it ever got to our area. And the minute that it became a dangerous weather event because it started producing tornadoes, well, then that heightens our alert, right? This is not just a regular rainstorm or a thunderstorm moving through, this has the potential to do devastation in its path. And so we really start communicating and coordinating, not just at the city emergency management level, but with our county emergency management partners, and our public safety communications folks are a big part of that. So what they start doing is they start a process of communicating with the National Weather Service over in Shreveport, Louisiana. The National Weather Service has offices positioned in Fort Worth, which is forward-looking, Shreveport, which is backward-looking. We get most of our information from the office in Shreveport, they're a little closer to us, so their information is a little more relevant to what's happening in Longview. So anytime we go under a tornado warning in Greg County, not just the city of Longview, but anywhere in Greg County, the decision was made many, many years ago that because of the geography of Greg County, coupled with the size of the city of Longview's footprint inside that county, the rationale is that if any part of Greg County is under threat, well, so is the city of Longview. You know, if you, and most of these storms, I know you, I know you know this, they move from west to east. So when that storm's getting bad on the edge of Kilgore, it's just about twenty or thirty minutes away from getting bad in the city of Longview. Or if it starts up in Glade Water, it starts up in Wild Oak. And our theory is that the sooner that we can get people's attention to say, hey, there's something that we're paying attention to that we need you to know about, well, then they can take those protective steps at home, bring the kids in from outside, go to your safe space, turn on the TV and start paying attention to the local news, or turn on your weather radio, and decide for yourself, how do I need to respond to this? And when the sirens are going off, that's just another way of grabbing your attention. That's what works for the people that are here from out of town, that are at the soccer tournament at Lear Park, or they're on the walking trails, or they may not have their cell phone with them, they're out working in the yard. That's another way that we grab your attention and say, hey, there's something that we know about that we want you to know about too, so go in and find out what that is. So that's kinda the theory. Now let me tell you how that's worked the other night with that storm. When Greg County went under a tornado warning, which included the city of Longview for a brief moment, the process in dispatch is that that dispatcher walks over to a computer console, much like about the height of this table, and starts punching in the commands to activate the twenty sirens around the city. We don't spot-check sirens. When we set them off, we set them off, because what's the one thing about severe weather you know? It's pretty much unpredictable. It can, that tornado can hop from Spring Hill to South Longview, and there's nothing you can do about it. So if it's good for Spring Hill to know about, it's good for South Longview to know about, is our, is our theory. Let everybody know that there's danger out there. And so what will happen is while that dispatcher's preparing to activate those sirens, another dispatcher is on a direct emergency backdoor line to the Weather Service Office in Shreveport, confirming that that weather is a threat to Longview. So what happened with the other, the weather the other night? Greg County went under a warning, that dispatcher was walking over, tapping in the commands, fixing to push the button to activate the twenty sirens, and the dispatcher on the phone said, stop, I've got solid information from the Weather Service that the city of Longview is not gonna have an impact from this tornado, or this tornado threat, okay? Radar indicated tornado. And so the decision is made to follow the policy and say, well, let's not stir up eighty-five thousand people because there's no immediate danger. And we've confirmed that and verified that with the people that are experts on weather. So that's how that works. And I know people don't understand, you know, how, how some of this stuff happens in the background, but that's the, that's the why. So anybody that wants to talk about this further, please reach out to me. I'm happy to have these conversations all day long. We've learned this by, by, by trial and error, it's, it's been an experience, and we still continue to learn. But our goal, our goal has always been to do what is, whatever's necessary to give our people the best chance to survive one of these events whenever they're right there in front of us. So I know that was a lot, but it's worth going over this one more time, any time that I can, just to explain it, because people don't always understand how it works. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
We've got two areas of our city that are not covered.
We do. So, we got a little void. Those sirens reach out for about sixty-two hundred feet. Now, that's an estimate. That's best case scenario. And you brought up a good point. One of the, one of the complaints that we heard out of this week's weather was the fact that people heard sirens in one part of town, but not in another part of town. What we've, what we've assessed is that those people were all in the northwest part of the city, they were hearing the sirens over in Wild Oak. Not any of the ones in the city of Longview were ever activated. Okay? Now, Wild Oak was in a different scenario, right? The weather was a bigger threat to them than it was the city. And they may not, may or may not have the process that we had to get that good, solid information from the National Weather Service that's, that on the spot, that minute information. So, yeah, we do have some gaps that we probably need to start working on to close up. Our city footprint changes all the time. And another thing that we hear complaints about is, well, I can't hear the siren in my house. Well, the siren, you know, back in the Cold War days, I'm sure the houses weren't as tightly sealed and insulated as they are today and the TV wasn't as loud and the stereo wasn't as loud. And if people are waiting on these sirens to wake them up in the middle of the night, that's not a good move. That's why your phone needs to ring by that other process, okay? It just doesn't work that way. You're not going to hear it in your car driving down the road. You're not going to hear it if you're in an area, an industrial area where there's banging and pounding going on at Lebus or Trinity or somewhere like that, okay? You're just not going to hear it. So, but I'm glad you noticed that and that's something that we do, we are aware of, of trying to figure out how to close those gaps. Fortunately, most of the gaps are in areas that really there's not a lot of neighborhood impact, they're, they're not really built upon areas, they're in the flood plain or they're in the periphery of the city. But we're always looking for ways to improve this process. Yes, sir? Any other questions?
Chief, I appreciate you taking the time to clarify this because we get bombarded with the phone calls about why did they go off or why didn't they go off? And, you know, there's no, there's no crystal ball. If, if they go off and there's no damage to anyone, then people are mad. I mean, are you mad because we didn't have a tornado? I mean, that's, that's, doesn't make sense. And if it doesn't go off and we didn't have a tornado, they're mad because they didn't know about, but, yeah, there's no, you can't win, but we're doing the best we can. But, I mean, you don't have to be told to go eat dinner or put your seatbelt on. If it's bad weather, take cover, you know? It's simple. But remember what Chief Steelman said? Please call Chief Steelman if you want to talk to him about that, okay? He said it. Please call Chief Steelman. Thank you so much, Chief.
Yes, sir. Happy to take that for you.
This has been one of our best public safety updates ever. I love that one. Okay. We're to consent agenda. Any council members like to pull items off for separate discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. Don't necessarily want to pull them off, but I want to make sure the council's aware on item B and item H. I'll start with B. It's pretty simple. I spoke with staff today. We've got a situation where the, the person or the company that we are awarding this to is some forty-five percent under the other bidders. And they're a out-of-town company, but I understand they do have some people that live in East Texas. And this is a real critical piece of our, of our communication within our, our city and its cabling and those kind of things. And I just thought that was a little bit strange that the, the bid would be that, that far under and then the other two bidders were up there fairly close together on something that's really critical is being able to communicate, if you will. And that was just a simple comment there. I'm good with what the staff explanations have been as far as responding to me today and I appreciate that. Item H is another simple comment and this is probably a Michael question. Anytime you've got liens on property within our dear state and county, if we waive this, which is not necessarily a problem, but are the county and the school district on board? Or are we just doing it by ourselves?
Yeah, this, this is a lien for demolition of a structure and for mowing, so it's not affecting any of the taxes that are due.
Because it's not a tax lien.
It's not a tax lien.
Okay.
It's a nuisance abatement lien.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
They're fine, Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're to items of community interest. We'll start with you, Mr. Carpenter.
The District One Road Show is going on the road on Tuesday, May the 24th. Will be at Crackery United Methodist Church. Love to see all of you out there for that. I want to keep our friends and neighbors up in Gilmar and Ours City in our prayers. I've been up in that area about two days and it's, Mayor, it's just absolutely unbelievable, some of the stuff that was up there. Carports and patio covers sitting in the middle of trees, eighteen-inch oak trees that looked like toothpicks. I mean, it just, the storm was really something that was, it was pretty impressive. The last thing is, I did a scientific survey, Mayor, on our city and I used Ms. Shahara's website to, to do that and the comment was, I want to move to Tyler from Longview. And I'm happy to report that out of two hundred-plus respondents, a hundred and seventy-seven said, no way, I'm staying in Longview. So, I thought that was a good scientific approach to our city. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Ms. Sinotti.
Good evening, everyone. The Coalition for Drug-Free Youth will host a DEA Drug Trends presentation on Thursday, March 31st. The meeting will be held in the Michelle Room of the Longview Public Library and Space is Limited. To earn more or reserve your spot, please call Partners in Prevention at 903-237-1019. Also, please remember that the Longview Police Department and the Coalition for Drug-Free Youth encourage everyone to safely dispose of their unused, unwanted, or expired medications in the prescription drug box, drop box located in the lobby of the Longview Police Department at 302 West Cotton Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Sure. Just once again, just a current update on the progression of Broughton Recreation Center and Broughton Park. We have normally every June is a big Juneteenth celebration that occurs around Broughton Park and Broughton Recreation Center. And this year, the focus of Juneteenth celebrations will be moved to downtown Longview, including the parade. And I'd like to thank the Parks Department for willing to jump in and assist us with that. That's Mr. Karen and his staff. And that'll do it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Shahara.
I have two this evening. Please join us at Strut Your Month. That is coming up this Saturday at 10:00 AM. Going to be super exciting, so lots of family things to do. Bring your animals and come look with us and support our animal shelter. And the next one is Love Longview. Chief Boone mentioned that.